6:30.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Welcome all. Can't look at the bills, uh, I'm gonna take a motion to approve the bills.
I have a couple of questions with the, uh, someone. There's that one that had the tax on it.
Okay, yeah.
So, that...
Was it, uh...
It was the one, um, who's and what's it?
I think Gary, wasn't it?
Uh, yes, Gary had paid it or something, so I didn't know if that's just like, I haven't seen anything about it.
Yeah, it's every once in a while something like that sticks through. Um, it's hard to get everything set up for tax-free.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, he bought that on his own. Tax got in there. Of course, they had to go out and get something the other day and, uh, we didn't have a counter side for them to get it tax-free.
Yeah, that's why, I was, I mean, it's not a huge amount either, but...
Renee is very, you know, so something comes in and the tax on it, she's tried to get it reversed.
Yeah, it's $2.16. So, you're aware.
Um, and then my other question was just, just a little thing with the, two of the tanks can be found on the AD call thing. Do they charge less for those when they go and they can't find them, or is it just like on there?
They usually don't charge when they, um, pump them, so if they can't find, they leave them locked and they can't find them. So, right now, that's what they're doing, uh, today and tomorrow, is finding about, about 12 tanks that, uh, they couldn't find and that they're just...
So, they're just on the bill, but they're not charged?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
You look like they dug up two spots in my area.
Well, some, yeah, it's possible, 'cause sometimes they're gonna clean out and then there's the, the covered tanks, so they might want to hit both.
What are the, what are the hundred dollar refunds, Courtney?
What's that?
The hundred dollar refunds to villagers?
Yeah, a lot. If they have a deposit.
Oh, right.
Renters have to have a deposit.
Okay, could that be a deposit return for like renting one of the facilities or something?
Like, if they rent an apartment in the, uh, anybody who rents an apartment in the village.
Okay.
The people who own, uh, houses, we don't make them do the deposit, but renters, they all have to pay a deposit. And if they pay on time every month for, for a year, then we give it back to them more than about...
Okay.
Part of the reason why our write-offs were so low.
Any other discussion on the bills? Have you taken a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of the August 10th, 2022 meeting minutes. We all had those prior to the meeting. Look over, any discussion?
I did not get them. I didn't, they weren't in my email. I don't know if somebody else saw them in their email.
I got them.
Did you guys get them?
I got them, but I was not here for meetings, so I have to stay.
So, I didn't, and I don't have them in my packet. And I looked, I specifically looked in my email, so I don't know what happened.
Have you been getting other emails from me?
Yeah, and I got, I got everything else, but it just didn't have the minutes in it.
That's where you are?
Like, on Monday or Tuesday, whatever it was.
Yeah, on Monday.
Yeah, I got all of those things, but no minutes. Thanks.
Next time? I want to, yeah, we can do that. We'll approve those at the next meeting then. At the, uh, report of the officers, uh, let's start off with the, uh, the grant for the park, that we're using for the bathrooms. We, uh, the board approved, uh, the money, uh, funding to get started on the restoration of the park bathrooms. And we, uh, I have ordered the long-term lead items, which are the, the doors and the frames. Uh, there are eight-week lead time to get those in, so we got those out of order. Everything else that I've checked into is, uh, relatively available, uh, short, short notice, so we, uh, we want to get those out of order, so we have in-house to get started hopefully by the end of, uh, October or first part of November, so. I think everybody's, uh, noticed, we've got the LED lights, speed radar signs up on Rochester Street. I've had numerous comments, people think they're, uh, working fine and, uh, making an impact somewhat. Like I said, I think it keeps the honest people, uh, seeing them and they slow down and the people who want to speed are just gonna speed anyways. But I, I, I run a lot and when I'm going down, I'll purposely stop and I'll see cars that hit or brakes and slow down, so they definitely work. Happy to say that Hickory Park Playground got painted. Uh, if you look at it now, it jumps right out at you, that red, it looks like a brand-new facility. So, I'm glad that got done this season. Uh, repairs at the Hartland Park Big Bridge, uh, they were scheduled for today, uh, they couldn't, couldn't get there to do it today. Mark Diltcher is gonna be assisting our guys with that. We need a big piece of equipment to move the bridge to do what we have to do. It's been sinking into the, the bank over there and it's getting lower and lower. So, we're, uh, sticking concrete piers underneath it, uh, to level it up and then, uh, to make that walking trail more readily accessible. I know we have one resident in a wheelchair and he has trouble right now, so we're gonna smoothen that trail out. And that, uh, that's gonna take place, uh, the bridge work's gonna take place tomorrow. Uh, resurfacing on the roads went well. Apple Tree Church, Leroy's Spring and Merriman Roads are complete.
Nice job, too. That's, that's way better than, uh, the work that...
Yeah.
Clavell, that looks nice, looks like a new road.
Yeah, got a lot of positive comments on that also. The guy's been finishing up work at the former Pivot Acupuncture. Uh, we have a new tenant that's gonna be going in there. When is she scheduled to go in there?
Uh, when they, when they're done.
Okay, they're just about done. I, I've talked to Eric and, uh, I think they have to move a washer dryer out there, but it's, it's in the final stages, so. Uh, sidewalk replacement will be taking place. Pro Construction's been hired to pour the new sidewalks. Various spots throughout the village, lip sidewalks, we're gonna do that in-house. We're gonna rent the milling machine, put it on the front of our Bobcat. And, uh, we had a quote for how much, Courtney, for that? For 19,000, was it?
I don't remember.
It was, it was, it was a substantial amount of money, so we can just rent the, uh, the milling machine and, uh, it'll go right on our Bobcat and we can do that work ourselves, or our PPW guys will be doing that work. And with the rain coming back, a lot of mowing's going on again, so. Our sewer plant, the, uh, computer upgrades have been completed. Courtney purchased an iPad, so now, uh, he can control the, uh, all the data in there. You know, even if he's home, if something comes up, he can change things, uh, for the plant, so it's a big improvement. So, that's, uh, been completed. Uh, I think, uh, STC gave us a update. Give to Casey DeGrath, who's Clark Passion, we are engineer there. And he, uh, said our new screen that we ordered will not arrive until June of 2023. That's how much of a lead time there is on that, it's way out there. And the rest of the work should, uh, proceed in early November, which is still a couple of months farther than we thought it would be. We thought we'd be starting work in September on a lot of the stuff, but, uh, delays in the, uh, availability of obtaining the equipment, uh, is related in the, uh, I'll say they're waiting till November, so. Uh, we got, uh, neutral aid coming in from Castile, Holly, Akron and Silver Springs. Uh, tree trimming in our, uh, electric circuits throughout the village. We'll be here on the 27th, 28th, so we should be able to, I would say, get the whole village done in that amount of time. We're fortunate we have that. Other companies like National Grid or even, uh, Spencerport, they, they have to hire that all out. And it's nothing to spend 50, 60,000 dollars just tree trimming, having somebody come in to tree trim your, your line, so. We're fortunate, uh, we help, uh, other munis and, uh, if there's a chance of incoming here to help us, so it works both ways. Uh, our crew helped Holly and Silver Springs. They had electric issues and our, our two guys went there and helped them as mutually, also. Uh, they've been working at Apple Tree Corporate Park with the, uh, upgrade there, the new building going on for Liberty Pumps.
So, is that a bathroom?
Yeah, right through that door.
Right there, Mark?
Yeah, right there, make a right, straight ahead from there. I, uh, attended the MUA Annual Conference, it was held September 6th through 9th in Syracuse. The main topic were, uh, the future of renewable energy. The cost, the impact, the rate pairs, and, uh, on the electric grid. You know, the more and more you add on to, uh, electric, such as plugging in cars, the more strain it puts on in the infrastructure of a system. And like our system, we're, we're getting near our limit of what we have available now. We're gonna be looking into, uh, upgrading our substation. I'd like to start that in January. Our current substation is, will be 40 years old. That's the life expectancy of a substation. So, it's time that we start looking, 'cause it's probably five years. Once you start to actually energize the new station, probably about five years. So, uh, it's, it's time that we, uh, get the ball rolling on that. And again, saying, I want to do that, come January. The reason January is, I believe we're debt-free in January for electric. So, substation is not going to be cheap, but it's, it's a necessity and we have to do it for long-term reliability. Uh, we have to do it, so. And, uh, happy to say, uh, the DOT, I called the DOT, and I don't know if you noticed, but a lot of the paddles got filled out here yesterday.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, they got out here, so. Uh, they finally got out here. And, uh, the sweeper came in, like you said, you saw him using it, it's the first time it was out. It's been working well. It came in, take the board, allowed $10,000, it came in under that. I actually called the guy to see if there would be a price increase and he actually knocked off a little bit more on it, so. Came in even cheaper than what we initially thought, so that was good.
We had the mark.
Yeah. Any other questions? Courtney?
Yep, um, on my report, uh, just the one thing I want to add, um, garbage. Just a few things I must pick up last time, anyone picked up, uh, this time? So, they, they're, my county manager said they should be here tomorrow, because supposedly they didn't get the email that I sent them. I talked to him, he sent, he sent me an email, I sent him the email, he said he didn't get it, but, uh, I, I texted it to him today, so he should be...
You have any complaints?
Yeah, there's two other things I have.
You have any complaints about?
Oh, I, no.
So, you're saying they did not pick up?
There's three bulk items that they didn't pick up in the village. The, uh, last two they, they didn't pick up.
Got it.
I talked to the, um, manager, the district manager, and he was supposed to, they were supposed to get them today. Um, and, or yesterday, they did, so I called them today and he wants tomorrow.
I know of one, I think, but it was a mattress with other material on top of it and it rained. How you gonna pick that up? Full-size mattress, do you want to get that up there?
Is the trash policy for the village on the website?
Yes.
Like for residents? I've gotten a few questions as from people like, what's the policies? And I know, I know what it is, but I just want to direct people to where it is, so, okay.
I'll go Freitag, our accountant was here, was here, uh, yesterday and, um, so everything's probably there. Very happy with the way it is, very complimentary. Sidewalks, um, they're supposed to be started this week, uh, but because of the rain earlier in the week, they got pushed back. So, they promised to be here on Monday. I also want to point out, um, that we have 98% of the taxes, uh, collected already, uh, which is really, really good. We only have 8,904.13 left to collect, uh, which is really, really low. We've sent a lot more than that, uh, to the county before, so there's a couple of them that are old to us and pretty sure that people are gonna pay, so they should be even lower than that, so I'm really happy with that.
You sent out a reminder, like a late thing on that?
Yeah, yeah, Renee sent out a, a rather reminder. Some people take offense to them for some reason. Um, we just wanna make sure they remember, 'cause if people forget or, you know, maybe they'll get lost in the mail. Don't want to send to the county or have them accrue more penalties, but... The other thing, uh, Night Class, Night Class is, um, it's kind of an investment, uh, company that deals with municipal funds. Municipal, uh, investing is kind of tricky because you ha- has to be a hundred, it, it, there can't be no, um, loss, right? So, um, it has to be all secured, like CDs and the, and things like that. So, anyway, uh, over the years, the interest rates have been so low, um, that it really hasn't been advantageous for us to take our money and put it somewhere else. But now, interest rates are going up, uh, Night Class enough, which they've got for us up to 2%. And basically, a checking account, uh, we're only getting about 0.2, 0.3 in the checking account we have right now, uh, with, uh, Big and Fast Town. Uh, the town does it, BAR does it for them, and, uh, I'm very comfortable with moving the money back around, so instead of having so much money in our main fund, main account, just sitting there, um, we could move that out to Night Class and just return all that money. Won't be a ton, but it'd be a lot better than, you know, a hundred dollars or so that we get up here.
Are there, so there's no risks with that?
Right.
It's just it's one more accomplishment?
Yeah.
I was reading a little bit about it today, once I come back. First, they had like, I googled it, I was like, save your pets! So, all right, so, and they, you said you'd like them to come?
Right, yeah, they can come out and give a presentation, you can talk to the board about it, you can give all the details. So, if everybody's interested in that, I can contact them and schedule them coming out.
Yeah, I think...
Yes.
Back when, you know, even CDs were half percent, it was just one of the worst lock-in and operating, you know, they'd buy. Now, we can make some money, so we might as well do that.
Uh, so how long's that been before?
Uh, we haven't used Night Class before. Um, back before I, well, back when I got here, we had a couple of things at Chase. But that's right, you know, right around that time when the interest rates all dropped, so really the whole time we've been here, the interest rates have been really low.
Was there a prob, like, other than just, it was just the interest rates, is there not a problem? Was it fine? Let me try again. Was it fine working through Chase? That was like a fine program?
Well, Chase was a little bit different. Um, we, we were at Chase originally and then we slowly moved away, but kept a few things there. Um, that were just the reserves, so it was kind of handy having them separated in a way. But they weren't, were giving us, uh, too much interest, but, uh, Chase eventually told us, uh, we had to leave. Because we, we didn't, you know, we didn't have the fund balance that they required for us.
Okay. So, theirs was a regular, it wasn't like, uh, an investment account, it was just a checking account, it was like, yeah, more interest, okay. Um, how long, do you know how long the town's been using it?
Um, not exactly, but at least, at least two, three years, um, since BAR's been affiliated with them, working with them. And yeah, you can talk to BAR, uh, she, she, she thinks that she deals with it, so, um, she'd be a good person to talk to about it, too, and, uh, Bernie.
If there's no risk and we're making money, I mean, that sounds good.
Right, yeah, and like I said, the government funds, you can't have risk.
Right.
You can't put your, can't put taxpayers' funds into somewhere that...
Too many investment accounts or something, you know?
Right. Really, you know, besides those, uh, everything else doesn't matter for it.
Okay. You all should have the CEOs, EOs report.
Sorry, one more thing before I, uh, so in here, I talked about Renee making welcome pack, welcome burger packets, so here they are. So, um, she printed a couple off so you guys can see them.
She does a nice job on these.
And where are these going?
Uh, so when, you know, when new people come in, they've changed their electric, uh, over to their name, like they live in the town, and we'll just give them one of those. So, it has a lot of information that you might need. And, um, after the meeting, uh, probably tomorrow or Friday, we're gonna start bringing the light bulbs over from the, uh, clever trap. So, you can start packing the, the, um, bags for, give one, hand out light bulbs again, and we're gonna put that in there. So, then everybody will get one. And then, there's a lot of good information in there that we need. Hopefully, you'll get to handle it later in the fall.
That's nice, very nice presentation.
Okay, any questions on Courtney's report? Let's move on to the CEO, CEO report. Everyone should have a copy of it. Any questions about that?
Looks like a pretty easy night, eh?
A motion to accept the officer's reports?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
All of you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Everybody fill the floor.
Well, as far as those dogs, on Saturday, I did see the guy had a lady with him, uh, his wife or not. But she had control of the bigger dog, she was making it mine. And the littler dog seemed to be quite calmer, even though he seemed to be able to watch what to do with it. So, I think it's her that's in control. But, uh, I know, I talked to Renee and Renee, we haven't figured out where he lives.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you.
I'm not going up to him and say, hey, where you live, when he's like, you license your dog? That's not gonna happen.
That's what I was gonna ask you, you know where they live at. I'd actually knock on their door, say, people are concerned about your dogs, you know, just make sure you keep them.
Renee thought he was somewhere on South Lake, but we didn't see where, but she had control of the other, the bigger dog and she was talking to it a lot and making them mine and stuff. I think when the guy was just with both of them, they, they were just taking patrol of him.
They were in charge.
They were in charge. Like I told you about the net, that came from Allison Jones, the Ministry of, Methodist Ministry. Take that net, we ain't gonna play basketball. We, we play baseball. So...
Well, thanks for doing that.
Yes.
Um, the only thing I had was grass on the sidewalk. When you mow your lawn, just blow it off.
I'll, uh...
I, I walked, like, I go up Clinton Street and I've got... Where's Clinton Street now? 25 all the way to 33, the houses on that side. So, just past BAR's to the park. People just mow their lawn...
Okay.
And put grass on the sidewalk, so...
I'll, I'll put you in my next newsletter.
Yeah, Rochester Street, you know, I can't walk down to the guy with chickens on the corner. I can't go get the mail, I gotta walk the other side, I gotta go with you, Surdikes, and where Mrs. Cordy was, but the next guy has grass. I gotta walk across the street there, walk over.
Well, it's just common decency.
Yeah, it's just...
Yeah, I just, I know.
Lake Street was crazy because, I don't know, hold and mow that, but he had more lawn, there was, all the grass seemed to be in the sidewalk or in the road, which goes down your sewer.
No, it shouldn't be, neither, really. It's not good to blow it down the road either.
No, but there's two people on the, the upper side of Mackenzie. They drive their lawnmower, their tractor, over the curb, out into lake and turn around and come back and mow their lawn that way.
So, they're blowing it everywhere.
So, they're blowing it everywhere. And when their mower comes off the curb, you know, anything that's stuck to that mower, like, it's falling off of them. But if it's wet and you're mowing over the sidewalk, you pack it down and your, your blower isn't taking it off, it's stuck there. And when you're walking on a carpet of grass when it's wet, you don't want to do that, 'cause you don't know what else might be there, 'cause there's still dogs that some people aren't cleaning out by, the sidewalks are crazy. There's even a guy that blows it off on the trail next to McCallum, yeah, those next to McCallums. He mows his lawn and blows it on the, the cinder trail up there, where you want. Like, really, buddy?
Oh, you're talking about the park?
Yeah, the park, like, really? You can't three times blow it in and then come out and then, it's not gonna reach. It's not gonna reach.
Yeah, I use my mower to blow it back in.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's what I do.
I just back down and it blows it out.
Like, whoever mowed the, the house just past Anne Marie's, Anne Marie's. If they had put down the, uh, the block off plate, so the mower didn't discharge. You know, three swipes would have left three trails, but two trails would be close enough where you're running over again with them one time. It's a zero-turn mower, it's gonna grind it up. You've already mowed the grass, now you're just grinding up what you left on the trail with the block plate. And then one more swing through the other one, you didn't put anything on the sidewalk, you didn't put anything on the road. Unless your zero-turner's have a block plate.
Yeah, I think still would just be...
But still, no. Yeah, there was road, there was grass there, I mean, almost in the middle of the lakes, you know. Well, you can't walk out in the street and go around it, I gotta cross the street.
Okay, I'll put it in the newsletter, just so people can be more, a little more considerate.
Like, really?
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, let's keep the service. Emily?
No, anytime.
No concerns?
I expressed my concern earlier. If that gets logged and entered into the...
Well, you should say so everybody can hear it.
All right, anyways, I'm concerned about the speed on, uh, 33 going through the village, which is, uh, from the, uh, fire and pin all the way down past our, the houses on that road. There's a sign before Park View, 30 mile an hour, and then about 50 feet further down, there's another one. So, when you come off of Park View, you see, you can't see the one behind you, so now you're getting the new speed limit. What I suggest is they do the same thing for Rochester Street, because when they come off to Rochester Street to go to Churchville, there's no 30 mile an hour sign at all, and then you get, and you don't even know your speed until you get to the sign that says 55. So, there should be one more sign right there next to the restaurant, the Viking. Yeah, I think it'd be a fine place to put it.
Is that a county or a state?
State room. I would have to contact DOT and see if they'll allow us to put one there, I can do that.
Yeah, it's, you know, all we gotta do is...
You just can't take it upon yourselves to throw a sign up there.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Yeah, I think it'd be, you know, 'cause you really don't have any idea, 'cause there's no signs until you get past all the dogs and all the kids and all the houses, if you turn off Rochester Street.
The way you're talking about that, I walked the other day and the co-owner was going up the street by the park. And he's on the side of the road, he's got his way on. The lady behind him, she's not going around him, 'cause she's got a solid double line. The lady behind her was losing it.
Well, it's...
She was waving at her, telling her, go around there, go around there, do this all double line, you can't, when the bill is just 30. Just, he's gonna turn at the Sage Pavilion anyway. Give him two more seconds, he's out of your way, and she's waving at her, she's trying to get her attention. I walk on the other side of the street, really, really, come, come.
Yeah, I get, I get it, I get it, um, 'cause I come out of my driveway and I can't be going...
You can't control that, like, you know, like Joe said, you put up the, the things that tell them, hey, you're going too fast, that's, that's about it. My son said he came down past Anne Marie's down there. My son said he came down past Anne Marie's down there, and somebody caught him on the lawn.
Oh, yeah, so you...
Went flying by, went over the tracks, out, out towards Rockport, gone.
See, some of these things we just can't control.
You can't control people that are that crazy.
Better stew.
Okay. Need the notes on those? Under new business, AD Call requests for the sewer pumping contract. We had a three-year contract with AD Call. We've done business with AD Call a good many years now. We have a great working relationship with them. And sign of the times, you know? Price of labor, the price of fuel, these insurances, the amount it costs them to dispose. Everything has gone up tremendously. So he sent a letter saying he's raising our rate. And I called him back, said, we have a contract, you just can arbitrarily raise the rate. So I said, we're, we just started this fiscal budget, pretty much. I said, there's no way we can absorb that. And I said, I can bring it to the board and we don't have to decide this tonight, I want you to think it over. But what, what he's hoping for is that we can pretty much let him out of that last year of the contract. We're in, we're in doing about a year and a half, so the current contract would run to May thirty-first. So he would be looking at an exit clause to get out of that last year. He, he was charging us, or he is charging us, a hundred and forty dollars per one thousand gallon tank. And the new rate would be, what he was gonna raise it to was a hundred and eighty per tank.
A lot of repaying now, sorry?
One forty.
I just paid three hundred.
I, I was just gonna get to that, that's, he's going to that price. And that's what he's going through now. He's gotta go to that so he can make money.
For residential.
For residential tanks, two ninety-five he's going to. Like I said, we're locked in at this for our fiscal, well, but he's looking, and I can be sympathetic to his worries at. Who was, who could foresee the, how bad it was gonna get with, with everything else? The labor, if you can get people to work, you gotta pay them, pay them more money. And the price of diesel fuel really skyrocketed, so I understand. We deal with the same issues with our employees and fuel and everything else. So I, I, I guess I'd like to see us do something for him. They're very good company for us, it's not like they're a multimillion dollar outfit or a small outfit. But I want, I want you guys to think about it. Go online if you want, and you can see what takes cost to have them pumped, it's anywhere from three to five hundred dollars. So he's not, what he's telling us isn't out of line, you know, the money wise, so.
So the contract goes to him May two thousand twenty-three or two thousand twenty-four?
Mm-hmm, it's another year after twenty-four.
So, yeah, it'd be one year from May thirty.
So it'd be May twenty-four, which is very different than twenty twenty-three. Okay, perfect, I'll write that down.
So he wants to void the contract more than us, or we ban more to keep. And it's a sticky weekend, because you can't, can't raise the contract price.
You can't really, we, we, you, I don't know. It kinda gets tricky, because we put it out for bid, and I'll be honest, he was the only company that bid us. We didn't even have anybody else to bid on it, and I don't think anybody else could even compete with his price that he was giving us anyway.
I think there was one that was a way more expensive than, than what they wanted.
So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
He's, he's willing to honor the current contract till May twenty-twenty-three and then wants to be out?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, we would be locked in at the current price till the end of our fiscal, no?
And then with, from May, May...
June one would be the start of that.
So June one, he would do a year at a hundred and eighty?
Well, we, we would have to read it, we should send a bid out for bid.
That's what you're asking us to consider?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I'm asking you, are you willing to let him out of that last year of that contract?
I think it's a good idea to get other, other bids.
Well, would we bid it at that point? Or is he offering a one eighty?
We'd have to call for a bid again.
Okay.
So if you let him out of the contract, then we put it out for bid.
Which then we're gonna double or triple our rates, probably.
Well, that's, that's, that's the issue, is that, you know, you don't, he, you don't know what rate.
You don't know, but, well, you know, it's gonna be a lot more.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's the time we live in.
I mean, to me, I'd say we can't just, like, I understand, but at the same time, we have to say, people are paying for this and we have a contract, like, you wouldn't just be like, oh, well, the trash is really struggling, so we're gonna, you know, like, where do you draw the line? Like, so if we do it for them and you say, oh, yeah, you can get out of your contract, we'll pay you more. It's not like we're letting you out of your contract and you're paying, we're paying you less. It's hurting us, and then, so where does that stop? Like, every business is hurting, so how far do you go? Do you say, well, raising your trash? Well, raising your, this, raising your debt, so...
I know what you're saying, it's, it's a...
That's my, I, I mean, I feel bad for anyone that owns a small business right now. But I say that we also, you have to look at, you're not elected by AD Call, you're elected by the residents. And do you wanna look at a resident and say, guess what? I just voted to, for me, I don't wanna look at a resident and say, I just voted to spend you more money where I could guarantee it would be less money for another year, because everything is going on, so. To me, that's my perspective, that's my gut reaction, so...
That's why I want everyone to think about it.
Yeah. No, nothing against you, I'm just, that's my gut reaction.
Yeah, we got a lot of time.
Yeah, we do, we got a few months, you know, before we do the next budget, so it's, we have to rush into it, that's why I'm not saying we're gonna vote on this tonight, so.
You, you cart everything up, though, so you're, you'll be doing less sewers every year probably now, right? Did you bet?
We, we do about a hundred and seventy every year.
Well, I thought you were behind this, you were carting it up.
The average is a hundred and seven, and then there's a few that you do extra, but that's a good number, a hundred and seventy a year.
I guess my other question would be, if we said, yeah, you can break this contract and we'll pay this, is, what would it look like in the future? Is there a deal? What would it look like at the end if we kept the contract? Does he have any projections of what it would look like if we cut the contract and started a new one? Would that help us? 'Cause that's one thing I can see, okay, we cut the contract, but it's gonna help us over the next three years. But...
I, I, I could call and ask him that, see what he says.
Yeah, I mean, some of them, you might not know, it's still a year.
We were both very silly to each other, first time I ever talked to the man. We had a nice conversation, I understand, he understands. So I told him, you know, there's no way we can eat that cost this year, so.
Well, that's good, so we get, thanks.
So do, I, I'm sorry, do we, go ahead.
I have a question. So if you got a letter from him, who else does he contract with? Is he doing that with all the other people he has contracts with? Or is it just with this village?
I assume it's with all of them. All of them.
It's something to consider.
He probably got a letter from, he probably got a letter from where he takes the stuff to get rid of it, too, that said, hey, we're gonna be more.
I'm sure, I'm sure basically it's, it's all, everyone, 'cause he's, he told me he's raising all the rates of two ninety-five for your residential tank. You know, if you were outside the village, you may have come there, he's raising the rate.
No, I, I understand that, Jill, what I'm saying is, how many entities does he have contracts with?
That I don't know.
And is he doing that for all of them?
That's a fair question.
Because that would be something good to know, and it would also be good to know what those other entities think of, of it.
Okay.
Because it's kind of like a sticky weekend.
Yeah, it is.
You really need to look into it very closely, as Emily said, to see what's going to benefit the village more. And then you get back to, if you start breaking contracts, that sets another precedent that could be very, do I wanna say detrimental? It, it could be having a lot of negative connotations as you go down the road with other companies that you're contracting with.
I, I know, it's such a fine line.
Right.
I mean, he's, they've been so good to us with the cost he provided over the years.
And we don't wanna lose a good contractor.
No, you don't, but on the same token, it's, we know how bad this with everything today, and it is not going to get better. So you really need to have complete details down the line to know, because prices are just going to continue to be going up. So if you do it through this one, for this year, and, and say he's willing to sign another contract for three years at the one eighty price, what's to stop him from another year and a half from them saying, I still can't do it, we need, I wanna get out of this and we need to raise, raise prices more?
Again.
So it, it, it needs a lot of looking into and serious consideration before you make a move to decide truly how you want to do it. Off the bat, just initially, you would say, we have a contract, we need to stick to the contract. But I also understand what you're saying, he's been a good person to work with. But the fact remains is that everybody else is having to pay increased prices for everything else to you. So again, you need to figure out the best and where to draw the line and that. So it's not an easy situation.
No, it isn't.
And it's, you know, a bad situation to be in, especially for a small business. But there's, I think there's a lot more there to consider before you make decisions on that.
Well, I'm sure he'll never write her into a three-year agreement again, you know?
I don't think anybody's gonna.
No. I think it's still a long time.
But if you hold him to the contract, he's gonna be bitter.
He'll never bid again, yeah.
Or he'll try to make a next contract.
Well, you don't know that.
I don't know that.
No, you truly don't know that, because if he was the only one that really came within a reasonable amount, he's going to want to keep the business, so it would be foolish for him to discard the village as a possibility to work for.
You know, my, my concern would be that he, he'd try to make it up in the next contract by adding another forty dollars or twenty dollars per tank to what his bid is, knowing that he may be the only one bidding. And if we talk to him outside of the bidding process and say, well, can you lock us in for a hundred and eighty for three years? That might not be appropriate either.
Right, no.
If it's outside the bidding process. So it's, yeah, it's, it's tough, it's a hard situation. 'Cause we're, it's gonna, it's coming eventually, but if we can figure out a way to manage, maybe steps or something like that, I don't know, but... Yeah, it's hard.
Okay, I'll think it all over, okay? All the, the challenge issue. Like I said, we got a couple of months before we, get ready for the budget to have a number in there, so.
Just pass me the whole bucket of time. Thank you.
All the Burgen Fire Department budget. Everyone's got a copy, all the sheets, the long-term equipment. Eric did a nice job with all these, all his data. I attended their meeting Monday night, and he presented the budget there to the body there, and they, they passed his budget at their meeting. Just so you know, they had forty-three calls in August. Been really busy. Seventeen of those calls were for the village. I think nineteen were for the town and the rest were Riga. So forty-three calls for August. Seems like that sign is always blowing off. So this is another thing that we're not gonna vote on tonight. Take them home, look them over, it looks very reasonable, as Eric always did a nice job. Overall, two point six nine percent increase is all it is, which is very low. And the majority of that money is for the fuel, for the diesel mainly. So if you look down the items, you can see it's very reasonable.
Is he gonna come in for that other, or is he...
He couldn't be here tonight, he wanted to be here tonight. I would say, Emily, let's look it over, if you have any questions, let us know, if there's something we can't answer or we can get ahold of him to answer, or he'll, he'll come in.
Or you can contact him, too.
Yeah, or you could call him. But again, we got, we got time on the cell phone. But I'm sure that, you know, they like to know as soon as possible, I'm sure. The town, it was important, the town had this budget, because their fiscal runs differently than ours. I think they were January, yeah, so they need it now so they can do a budget, so. But as, as always, Eric's done a great job with the budget. Okay. I got some names for Park Committee and Tree Board. Then I'd like to appoint, and after the appointment, I'd like to have the board approve the appointments. We've had a Park and Tree Committee here for a lot of years, so I wanna keep it going. The names are, on the committee are Todd Cargill, my wife Maria, Heather Painting, Mary Ann Fleming, and myself.
Would you mind repeating them, please?
I'm sorry, Todd Cargill. Maria Trino. Heather Painting. Mary Ann Fleming. And myself, Chris.
So can you appoint people that you're related to? And you can't vote on that, because that would be wrong. So how do you do that?
I just won't vote.
But then, I guess we do everyone individually? 'Cause Mike can't vote either, 'cause he's always on there, too. So I...
I'd school them individually.
And just, you know, for the sake of questioning, because...
We can't skate, we can't apply to us.
Right. Were there other people? I'm assuming they're the only ones that are interested that would like to be on the thing, that they weren't bypassed by other people that should have interest.
No, no one's really come forth. I even asked Vicki way back, she didn't wanna stay on, so.
You know, it doesn't really look good, that you're like, hey, we're the mayor and the deputy, and we're appointing our wives, so... But that's why I was like, I don't wanna get questions and say, I don't know. I'm sure it's fine, because it really...
I think we're lucky if we get anybody to do that anyway, so I wouldn't kick anybody out.
Well, you know, people have questions about things, so...
Did you, I, I read them, but my brain does not retain a whole lot these days.
Yeah.
Did you put anything in the newsletter about openings for, for this, this, this committee? Because, because that would probably be a good thing to do, because there might be people also who would be interested, and the more you have, the better, because everybody's not always gonna be available. And you do need a decent number of people to make this work well.
I think there was always five on it, wasn't there, Grace? I think there was five on it, that's why I tried to get five.
Right, right.
No, I, I, that's...
But I mean, worthwhile doing that, because...
I agree with you.
But this is not urgent, you know, it was a question of urgency.
No, I've stopped people on, on the street and asked them, and...
No, no, you can't just...
And, you know, are you interested, no, I'm busy, you know?
But...
I, I will do that.
But the thing with that, as, as an incentive, if you choose to use it, it was a very successful committee for many years, which gave the village of Burgen the designation as a tree city.
Right.
For what, twelve, thirteen years in a row? And so now it's in advance, because there's no committee. But mentioning the fact that in the past, that's what we've had, and we'd like to start that up again to continue, because it truly is a significant kudo for the village to be designated.
No, I like your suggestion, I do. I will do that. I'll put it in the newsletter, see if we get anybody.
And you may not, but, but then nobody can say, well, I didn't know about it, or nobody asked me, or what, what have you.
No.
And then in the meantime, there's nothing wrong with talking to people personally who might have interested in gardening or trees and that, and just asking them, it might nudge them also, so.
Okay, I will, I will do that.
You can put it on Facebook, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably very... That's probably very easy.
Okay. We will do that. I already touched base on the Hickory Park bathroom. I told you where we're at with that. We're moving forward. And the bridge repairs is tomorrow, scheduled for tomorrow. Hopefully that goes safely. A lot of bridges to try and lift and move and do the work.
Is the bridge gonna be out?
For, for the day.
Oh, just for the day?
Just for a day. We're hoping just for a day. Anything else to bring before we close?
That was a nice electric rate for the last winter. It was high. It's been a long time.
Okay, yeah.
Two thousand, two thousand six fifteen. I was, yeah, close to it.
That was a...
I went, "Ooh, okay. I know why."
Yeah, it was transmission problems, congestion. When, when certain generators go offline for any reasons, then you have to renavigate on the transmission system how the power gets here.
And the public will say, "Hey, well, look at that. That's the, that's the rate. That's how much we use it. That's usage and stuff." Ah, God. Yeah, yeah, there's a lot more. It just costs more.
It's included in the APAC charge.
Yeah.
All the transmission. Oh, yeah, it was, I think it was seventy-one thousand dollars more. Our bill here at the village was seventy-one thousand dollars more for the month than the previous, previous year at this time. Yeah, we were thirty-eight thousand up to a hundred and whatever because of the congestion. So we have no control over that. That's governed through the NISO, the European Independent System Operator. They oversee the grid. They're the ones who renavigate the power and how it flows. And unfortunately, we have no say in that. You know, it's out of our control.
And I will say, as myself living in the, not in the village anymore, having a national grid bill, my bill was still six cents a kilo higher than the village.
Yeah, you said, "I will, I will..."
So, you know, it's our, our good rate, yeah. I know. And something like that hits you, "Well, what happened here?"
We don't get a call anymore. We used to get calls a lot. They want some electric. "I have village electric. What does that mean?" He said, "Buy my electric from the village. They supply it to the whole village." "You'll have to talk to them. I don't know how you can sell to them or not. Stop calling me." I don't, I don't get it.
Most of the time, whenever they do that, they spy out your municipal electric and they don't even bother. Because they can't compete with the rates.
Usually they don't understand what you're telling them, so they're confused.
This is the old, the one from the previous... Did everybody sign that?
Yes.
That one is the same.
Oh, so that's today?
That was today. This is the one from, they had a month.
Have we signed it?
We signed it, yeah.
Okay, so definitely put that in the newsletter. Press, please. Contact the DOT. I'll put something in the newsletter about the Tree and Park Committee and put it on Facebook. And we'll see what we get. Anything else before I proceed to close the meeting? Motion to close the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
In a second. I'll lose a favor.
Aye.